This Navy footage is showing questions on UFOs, Pentagon report is headed to Congress next month, and now President Obama away.
No, no.
Who eats your dinner?
All right, what do I?
Sorry about that, my Comcast. And leave me in the lurch.
Can you're freezing up, George?
Just out of curiosity, does anybody know if George is attempting to call in by phone now?
I don't know, I was wondering that too.
Hey Joe, would we have a plan B if George can't get back on? Meaning, could he go to the town hall and log on something?
Um, probably, I don't know what, I mean, he could use my computer, I suppose.
I'm just, just thinking aloud here.
Well, I don't see a board clerk on either. Is Mindy here?
No, she's not, she's on the road today, so I'm doing the recording, she'll be there minutes later.
Okay, am I audible?
Yes, you are.
Yes.
Okay, good. So as I was saying, I just switched to a different device and hopefully this one will be stable for the duration of the meeting. So as I was saying, our order of business is the approval of minutes for May 3rd. Do I have a motion to approve?
Did you call the meeting to order, George?
Yes, I did. I was probably in and out of connection when I did so. You and Commissioner Hallis are the only ones on the commission for the meeting, so that pretty much truncated the roll call and seating of commissioners.
I'll move to approve the minutes of May 3rd as written.
Now second.
Okay, any corrections or additions to the minutes?
I had none.
Okay, hearing none, then I will call for a vote, can I roll call Commissioner Halcy?
Aye.
Commissioner Larson?
Aye.
And I, Vice Chairman Elliott, vote aye. So the motion to approve the minutes carries three zero zero. Next item on the agenda, old business, IWWC 2036, the 26 Old Farms Road application. We've received, of course, new information requested by the Commission at previous meetings. And I wonder if, let's see now, Agent Wagner, could you speak to those changes and then we'll hear from the applicant or their agent regarding the basic summary of the output of the new information that has been received?
Okay, yeah, we got two supplemental information packages from Engineer Carl Atchamovich. And I think it is dated May 25th. So this one that has a drainage analysis for the floodplain, then there's another one that elaborates a little more on it, and then there's a a letter from Engineer Brandon Handfield with his recommendations to the Commission that also came in. Those are all posted on the website.
Right. Is Agent Handfield on the call? I can't see all the participants on this. I'd like someone to walk us through the, at least the summary of the information that's been received.
Hopefully Brandon's on.
Maybe Engineer Bushnell could start us off.
Okay, fine with me. Mr. Bushnell, if you would
Yeah.
Take it away.
So basically Carl analyzed the upstream and downstream conditions for the 25 and the 100 year storm. Now, the subdivision regulations only require us to do for 25 year, but we went, you know, a couple extra steps and went to 100 year. It's a 25 year, I believe, it showed no increase in water levels upstream. At the 100 year, there was a slight increase of nine tenths of a foot right in the vicinity of the crossing there. And, you know, in a 100, 100 year storm, it shows an outlet velocity of 4.8 feet per second, which is pretty low velocity. So, you know, we believe that, you know, the upstream impact, as far as a flooding condition, nine tenths of a foot's pretty minimal. You know, you're talking 100 year storm and it's going to happen once every 100 years theoretically, and it's going to be, you know, contained right to the area near the crossing. It's not going to affect any houses or anything important on the upstream properties. You know, like, as I said, the 25 year, which is required by the subdivision regulations, is, you know, no increase in the elevation of the water level in the upstream flow. And then we believe, you know, 4.8 feet per second, that's at 100 year storm. You know, we're going to put riprap in the, you know, at the outlet on the downstream side of the crossing. Probably going to need some larger sized riprap and concrete, some of that in to make a real sturdy outlet splash pad to slow that velocity to 4.8 down even more and to spread it out wider. You know, upstream, there's, you know, I'd call it a gentle slope channel that's, you know, covered with leaves and stick debris, understory cover. You know, Carl and I had been out there when we originally started this job, there was no flow and how we picked up on it, there was an intermittent flow was there was some sticks and some leaves moved there from, you know, probably from a larger storm, a larger, you know, velocity flow that moved them just a little bit, and that's how we could pick up where the flow paths were out there. So, you know, we would anticipate something like that in a larger storm would occur. I mean, there's going to be some natural, you know, disturbance of the area anyways in a larger storm, but we don't expect anything more than really what happens now. You know, in the downstream condition, same thing, the slope there really starts to flatten out downstream of where the proposed crossing is, and the flow widens out significantly, once it hits the neighbor's yard downstream. So then again, you know, between the minimal slope of the channel, the width of the channel, the wide width of the channel, and the outlet protection, you know, riprap, the protection pad that we're going to construct there, we don't anticipate any any detrimental, you know, effects downstream either from this crossing installation. You know, and we are, you know, we are designing it for the 100 year storm. If we were just doing the 25 years required, you know, you would see larger, I believe, and Carl can correct me if I'm wrong, you'd see larger velocities through these, through this box culvert and through the pipe, because you'd have a lot more head pressure on them in a 100 year storm. They wouldn't, you know, you wouldn't have the area, the pipe wouldn't be as big, the culvert wouldn't be as big to pass just the 25 year storm, so you'd get more velocity at the outlet. So, you know, by overdesigning still 100 year, we're really going above and beyond to try to mitigate, you know, the potential for downstream effects by decreasing the velocity.
Okay, thank you for that. I'll ask if any commissioners have any questions regarding the reports. I see that Engineer Asmovic is on the call now, if that's Carl too.
Yes.
Okay, very good. So I'll turn over if either the commissioners have any questions.
Yeah, it's Jim Halcy. First of all, I just wanted to thank Brandon in extension for turning this around very quickly. But I do have a question to the Chair, if I may, of Andrew Bushnell.
Go ahead.
Okay, and I have to assume that, Andrew, that you had an opportunity to review Brandon's submittal. And I just want to know that you feel comfortable, Frank, providing the two certifications that are suggested.
Not really. I mean, we can't certify to everything. I mean, there's other factors out there that could cause problems in that channel, that, you know, somebody could do something upstream to obstruct it or open it up. The tree could fall down upstream and you could get sticks washing down or a big limb that would plug up. Culvert, you know, there, I mean, there's things that could happen out there that we have no control over, and that we don't, situations that we don't create, you know? So, I mean, you can't certify 100% that nothing's going to happen out there, and that's kind of where we feel he's pushing us to, you know?
Could I just say something here?
Go right ahead.
I just want to reiterate that, you know, for the 25 year storm, there's no impact at all in terms of any increases along the line, because the culverts can handle that easily. For the 100 year storm, we have to remember statistically, this is a once in a hundred year occurrence, one time. And we're talking about a shallow increase of nine tenths of a foot in one section upstream of where this driveway crossing is going to be located. So it's not a large impact. In terms of impact, what Brandon has suggested here, impact to the side slopes of the gully that's there. It's very smooth along the bottom, has shallow slopes on the side, the approach velocity is very low. And I can say that there's not going to be any substantial impact. And again, we're looking at something occurring once in 100 years. Under normal conditions, like when Andrew and I went out there, you had a hard time figuring out where the channel was even located, because there's so little impact. And then as far as on the downstream side, what happens is when a culvert opens up, as Andrew has indicated, you spread out to a wide section and it gets wider as it goes past house number 74, the last house before it gets down into the floodplain area. And it just gets very wide and the impact is low, the velocities are low. So I, and again, you know, with the 100 year analysis, looking at a really, really rare occurrence, one time, under normal conditions, you're not going to even see an impact here.
Okay, thank you.
So, you know, if I could just add here, the certification is, you know, I can say unequivocally, we're not going to have any major impact, but to anticipate every potential situation, as Andrew has indicated, debris could come down, something could clog things up. People may be doing stuff in the, in the low area upstream of where the driveway is going to be located. There's a myriad of things that can happen, especially when looking over a span of years or decades. So we can't, we can't foresee every possible situation that could occur here. But under normal conditions and normal maintenance of this area, we were not going to see anything detrimental, particularly for the, for the storms that we've analyzed for, and again, the worst situation you're looking at here is around house number 68, where I have cross-section five shown on the plans. There's a potential nine tenths of an increase in the, in the water surface elevation due to the 100 year storm. Not to the 25, there's none for the 25, which is your requirement. And even at that, if we look at the next sheet, which indicates the elevation of the house at cross-section five, the house elevation, round elevation behind the house is approximately 342. And the highest water surface elevation for the 100 year storm is 328.2. So we're looking at an approximate nine foot difference in elevation from the back of the house, the low point of the back of the house, to the water surface down in the low area. Okay.
You know, I believe we realize that you can't foresee every possible contingency, and especially via view what might happen upstream in the future. But I think we can take your assurance that as a result of the proposed activity per se, there will be no impact or negligible impact on either upstream or downstream conditions. Now.
Correct.
Okay. Commissioner Halcy, does that satisfy your original inquiry?
I'm compelled to just raise the issue that the definition of 100 year flood is not consistent with what I understand 100 year flood to be, but it's neither here nor there. I'm comfortable with the response.
Are we talking about the, you know, 100 year rainfall event versus?
It's a 1% in any given year. That's a given definition, as I understand it. As opposed to
You're correct.
Happening every 100 years. I'm sorry, it's just, it's just something that I had to, I had to write, sorry.
Okay, okay. Well, thanks for that point of correction. Commissioner Larson, did you have any further questions regarding the application or the supplemental information?
I did have a couple, and the first one is for you on would it be appropriate for us to put a condition of approval that the applicants would keep the culvert clear to try and mitigate the debris clogging?
If I might add something there, I think I would agree with that. And I think maintenance, because I look a lot of dams throughout the state, and maintenance is extremely important. So to me, that would be a pertinent condition to add to any approval.
And from my perspective, yes, we can certainly add that as a condition of approval. My only question then would be, how would we make sure that that is enforced or that there's follow-up, you know, past our institutional memory and without overtasking our agent with the need for annual inspection?
Yeah, I'm not suggesting that we do anything like that. We just make it clear to the applicant that we expect them to keep the debris out of the way so that it allows good flow.
I agree. I mean, realistically, there's drainage swales, et cetera, you know, on many development projects, and if they're not maintained, they fail, and that's, it's a given, you know? Everything requires maintenance, you know, we have a lot of long driveways in town, a lot of swales, and a lot of, a lot of them do fail. Nonetheless, I think it's a great condition.
I mean, I think, I think these culverts, the culvert 36 and the box culvert is a, will be a three by eight or so by the time we fill in. Well, the 36 is going to get filled in a little bit too, but they're going to be big openings, so, you know, it's not going to get clogged by the little common kind of things that would clog a typical driveway culvert or swell, you know, it'll take quite a larger piece of debris to plug these, so. I think it'll be pretty obvious that it needs to be maintained when you get some kind of debris like that in front of it, plugging it up, you know, or starting to plug it up, you know? But your everyday debris, I think, is going to, is going to wash right through there like it does now.
Well, and that brings me to my next question, I guess, is, I'm still I'm still confused on the size of the box culver. And we've been talking about the box culver being a four by eight foot. Box. When I look at the drawings, it refers to it as a. Free by eight foot. Four sided box. And I know last time we talked about it being four foot with. A foot of dirt in the bottom limiting it to three.
Right, right, I think, yeah, yep.
But if I look at the. The detailed drawing that actually shows the culvert. It shows. The culvert three feet high. With three quarters of a foot of dirt in the bottom, and so.
Okay, yeah, it is, it's what's on the plan. It's it's what's on the on the plan there.
So.
We're we're filling it in.
But I understand we're filling it in, but on the plan, we're filling in a three foot opening. With three quarters of foot, so it's only two, two and a quarter foot opening. And I'm just trying to. Gain an understanding of what it is that we really expect to see when we go out. And see the driveway done.
You'll you'll see a two and a quarter foot opening by eight foot wide.
And and is that because? The outside diameter of the box is four by eight and no, that doesn't make sense either because. If. I don't know if the opening. To a four by eight foot box culvert is four by eight, or if that's the outside diameter, the inside might be. Two by. Six.
I think that's, I think that's a clear, clear opening, so, yeah, it's clear opening. Inside.
So anyhow, I think it's important that we have the the drawing show. What we're really doing with respect to that culvert, because I think that culvert is important to making sure that we're. Passing the flow that that we expect to go there.
I think originally we started at four by eight, we realized that that was way too much more than we needed. I got my plans right, let me grab.
If I, if I could, uh, I can add to that. So we originally talked about a four by eight. Uh, but like Andrew said. We realized that, uh, it was much, much bigger than what we. And a three foot by eight. With, uh, nine inches of. The date of soils placed on the inside, uh. Was sufficient to, um. To meet all the regulations that we were needing to meet and and flow and all that.
Okay, um. But to be clear, and even when we went back and we talked at the last. We were talking. About the minutes at the last meeting, we corrected them to say it's. Four foot high by eight foot wide as opposed to eight foot high by four foot wide, so. Right now is the first we've ever mentioned this being a three by eight culvert. As opposed to a four by eight culvert.
I think you're correct about that, Commissioner Larson, and, um. I think what we need here is the assurance that the, you know, of. Calculations that, uh. We've just addressed regarding upstream and downstream impacts are indeed. Predicated on the. Actual size opened, that is to say, three foot high by eight foot wide culvert. With a three quarter foot. Fill. At the base.
Yes, because the documentation submitted doesn't say anything about the size of the culvert.
Uh, from what I understand, and maybe Carl can add to this, um. That the calculations were done at, uh, the two foot 10. By eight foot. In other words, what's on the drawings?
The, uh, could I just add something in here? The, um. Revised report. Issued to Brandon. On, uh, April 29th. Shows a the calculation, the calculations were done for a three foot high. By eight foot wide concrete box culvert. In a 36 inch diameter HDP pipe. And I said, note that each culvert. Will be filled to a nine inch depth. Inside its base with normal stream materials. And the result of that analysis. Left us at the 100 year storm level. 2.3 feet. Below the top of the driveway. So that was a three foot high by eight foot wide, that's in the report. Three foot wide by, uh, excuse me, eight foot wide by three foot high. Concrete box culvert filled to nine inches. The 36 inch pipe filled to nine inches. And the analysis from that. Gives us. A. A level that is 2.3 feet. Below the top of the driveway. In the event for the 100.
Yeah, I missed that when I looked through it then. And my final question then is for, uh. Eric, the last meeting, you kind of briefed us on the overall. Your project and and you had mentioned the fact that the. Driveway. Cost. Was three times what your original estimate. For that was gonna be. And I was. Curious is to what was the specific cost to add to upgrade from the 36 inch plate to the box culver?
George, can you, do you remember that? I mean, you kind of priced that out.
Uh, yes, so the the box culvert, just to purchase them. Uh, it's about $10,000. Uh, each section weighs. Approximately 11,000 pounds. Uh, so it's gonna take a a very large piece of equipment in order to. To maneuver them and place them. Uh, so. With the cost of. The structure and the cost of mobilizing a piece of equipment like that. Uh, that's where, um. All this additional cost is coming from.
I think there's, you know, transportation costs as well, right? The culvert sections. Yeah. Yeah, I said, George, that final number, like somewhere between 15 to $20,000?
Yeah, I think it was like, uh, somewhere around 17 or 18,000 dollars installed.
Okay. That, uh, that takes care of my questions.
Okay, um, and. You've already addressed the questions that I had, so I don't have any further questions either. And I think we're now at a point where we can consider. Uh, action on this application. On. Uh, entertain a motion to approve. The application with conditions to be specified. In discussion. I believe, uh. Agent Wagner has drawn up some, I don't know if we have a summary motion in hand. I would like a motion to approve the application so that we can proceed.
I'll make a motion to approve the application.
Okay. Moved.
I was second, I I would like it to refer to the specific. Plans. Just as it.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second to approve the application. Now we're open for discussion. That would, of course, include the conditions of approval. Jimmy, you were saying. Something about referring to plans, I don't, I didn't quite understand that. Comment.
One condition that comes to mind is, um, we were, it was represented that some mitigation we've done in terms of, uh, removal of some. Invasive species and replanting. Um, and if we could perhaps include that. In reference. The document. Where that was proposed, and I believe it would have been. George. Environmental consultant that is, um. Working on behalf of the applicant.
And George Logan, I believe that was his second report.
Thank you.
Okay, and, um. So. Um, mitigation being one condition of approval, uh, maintenance being another condition of approval as previously mentioned. Uh, Agent Wagner, I believe that, you know. Some time back, we did correspond a bit about, uh, conditions of approval. Uh, did you have any, uh, further, uh, recommendations? In that regard?
Um, I think I wrote. The draft of the mitigation condition. Um, I sent it to you, I'm trying to find it now, I remember you, I think you edited it.
I made a few changes, but I'm backing off of those. I think we can basically reference. The environmental consultants report in terms of. Uh, you know, what needs to be removed, namely barberry, and what needs to be planted, namely. Uh, native, uh, shrubs, native and adapted shrubs, uh.
Yeah. So the report. The letter from George Logan to the chairman. Was, let's see. There was, there was a February 26th, which I think is the one with the mitigation plan. And then January 22nd was the first one. She can make a motion to, uh. Include mitigation plan as submitted by. Ecologist George Logan and his report on, uh, February 26, 2021. And then the. This current. Plan, I believe, is March 10th, 21. The revision. So it'd be what was what Jim was asking for.
I I do have one comment, um, I mean, I ideally. The commission has some control over. The timing of of that remediation. I'm not sure. We we can in this situation, um. I mean, as I recall, uh, some of the work would be done. Possibly this year, and then there was a time period, um. I don't know, I mean, I don't know as though we can tie it to a. A CO or. I don't, I don't think we can personally, but I just. I don't, if if there's any way we could just. Give our enforcement agent. Some key here. Be great. But if not, um. I can live with it.
I think that we have, uh, you know, two, two factors to consider. First of all. Vegetation removal, getting the barber out. Will depend on site conditions. Uh, right now would be a really good time to do it, but. You know, they're not on the site and they're not doing the work, but it should be certainly as early, the removal should certainly be as early as possible in the. Uh, construction sequence, and I think our, uh, our agent. Uh, should be able to observe that activity, uh, when reviewing the construction. As it proceeds, uh, the. Secondary removal, which will probably, which will occur the following season, and then the subsequent planning. Uh, planting, uh, of, uh, native and adaptive vegetation will be, uh. By that reckoning, about three years down the road. Uh, so, uh, I I think it would be a. You know, an an action item for for the, uh. For the agent, but again, it's hard to put, uh, a real timetable on it, and certainly. Uh, in terms of, uh, the. The final, uh. Approval. Uh, I I'm not sure that we're in a position to do that.
Okay, I I can appreciate that. I mean, there's a lot of factors here beyond the applicant's control. I mean, there's a lot of steps that. Have to map out. Things like financing and stuff.
Right. Yeah, if we're, if we're done, it were well to be done quickly. But, uh, again, as you say, there's so much dependent on site conditions. Uh, the mitigation is so much dependent on site conditions that it would be hard for us to specify. Uh, exactly when to do it. Or, again, we can, I I. You know, our agent is sort of the cognizant, will be cognizant of that, and I think we expect him to. Be aware of those activities and look for those activities.
I think perhaps from record, we could include something to the effect that. Um, remediation is, you know, by the time a CO is issued for the first dwelling. That remediation would have been commenced in a plan for its completion, something like that, something that I think that the applicant could could live with.
I think that's a fair. Way of, way of approaching it. Agent Wagner, do you have any comments from from an enforcement perspective here?
No, that makes sense to me, because, uh, just start it before. The final, uh. CEO, um, as I don't know, that makes sense to me. You can't really dictate when it's gonna end, because. Can't really be specific about that.
Right, but certainly you'll be out there during the first season. Of construction, uh, you know, as. The, obviously, the, the. I I don't know where the, where the construction of that driveway would occur in the sequence of events, but. I would expect it would be fairly early on, and again, if you've got equipment down there, that's gonna be the time. To, uh, a good, good time to go after, uh, invasive removal. Jeff, did you have any, uh? Comments on on, uh. Conditions of approval? Okay, so conditions of approval, of course, standard conditions, but now we're including, uh, the, uh, the mitigation. Vegetation removal and replacement and the maintenance as a condition. Are there. Any further conditions that we should consider? As. Relevant to this application?
Terminally. Enlightening, would we be imposing the standard conditions of things like? That, you know, the the applicant notify the wetlands agent 24 hours prior to construction, that sort of thing, uh. The the silk fence shall stay in place until, well, I mean, that that kind of information may be part of the ENS plan, I'm not. Positive, but nonetheless, um. I I don't know if there's anything else, just that we can give, give our agent. To work with. Maybe it's all there, um. I don't know. It's been a while.
Yeah, yeah. I also think that for the record, uh, we should. Make the finding that, uh, the application, uh. Satisfies the criteria and that there is no, um. Reasonable and prudent alternative. Uh, to this activity. To this activity. We don't have, I I don't see Mindy on the call here.
Mindy's not here.
Yeah, it's gone.
Okay.
You must have been.
Okay, we've got, well, the meeting is being recorded, so.
Yes.
I'm just concerned that we have, you know, an accurate record of the conditions. I'm not in a position here to. Draft a detailed motion on the fly. But I want to make sure that we're clear on. The, again, the grounds for. Approved for the motion to approve the application and that, you know, can. That the supplemental conditions are are clear. I think that they will be. How shall I say, they'll be reflected in the minutes of this meeting. Which we will consider at our next regular meeting. I hope that that will be adequate. As far as commissioners and applicants are concerned, so that we can again proceed. To act on the application.
Can I go back to Brandon's? Letter? Can we can we at least get certifications that may not be worded? It could be worded just. To the effect that, you know, to the best of the. So. Could they be worded to satisfy? Both engineer or at least something that that Andrew is comfortable with and provides some level of certification.
Well, we do have a record. In at this meeting. A statement. Do you want something in writing to to back up? The assertion that's already made.
To the effect. I can't tell you exactly what it would say, but it would be, I mean, obviously Andrew made it clear that he can't. Can't comply to to Brandon's request. Full extent, but perhaps we could have something. Something in the record. All right, it's not a deal breaker for me. It was just thought.
This is Agent Wagner here. I just feel like. The signature on the report with the professional engineer stamp kind of counts.
Okay.
Counts towards, I mean, stake in the professional reputation on. On the conclusions that he makes in the report, so. What else you really need?
Should we summarize the motion? Is that is that what you're looking for, Chairman Elliott? Just.
Yeah, I want to make sure that we have a clear, clear sense of of the motion. I, since I don't have anything drafted in writing. We are, first of all, finding that the. That the activity is permissible and there's no. Reasonable prudent alternative to the proposed activity to the construction of this crossing. That we will include as. In addition to the standard conditions of approval, such as notification and so forth, that the. Applicants undertake removal of barberry specifically and that they plant. Native and adapted shrubs as deleted in the environmental consultant's report. And that they undertake to maintain the span to avoid blockage and, you know, backup. In the event of a flood or of a. One percent rainfall event. I believe that that was. All the conditions that we were going to. Require. To issue a permit.
For clarity, I just, I'd like. The the approval to to reference the the plan that was submitted, the. A title, a date, and a revision revised through, just so for clarity. I realize this plan is not necessarily filed in land records, nonetheless. Somewhere in record, in our archives, you know.
Right.
The town's archives.
And that that was the, again, Agent Wagner, I believe that was the March 10th plan or?
Yeah, it's a last revision was March 10th. That will also be on the permit too. As a part of the standard conditions that the permit references. To plan last provision, March.
It's probably not required, probably not necessarily, like, interesting. Wetlands nuances of wetlands, they always elude me, so. Thank you.
Okay, is there any further discussion regarding the motion? Seeing none, then I'm going to ask for a vote. Commissioner Halcy.
Aye.
Commissioner Larson.
Aye.
And I, Vice Chairman Elliott, also vote aye. The motion carries three, zero, zero. We approve the permit with, of course, conditions as described. There'll be the two week waiting period and Agent Wagner can take it from here. Okay. Glad to have that off of the agenda now. We can move on to. Agenda item number seven, enforcement actions. First of all, we have a show cause hearing regarding the. Activities of gravel pit on 497 Route Six. Agent Wagner, could you bring us up to date on that?
Yeah, yeah. I issued a. Cease and desist and an order to remediate. Yesterday, May 26. For violation of the permit. At the. 497 Route Six gravel pit. There were some placement of stump, the conditions on the. Cease and desist letters, placement of stumps, tree limbs and other woody debris within the 200 foot upland review area of the Hop River and within. The 100 foot upland review area of wetlands and burnout pools. Stumps, tree limbs and other woody debris have been placed in an area to the northeast of a line indicated on the site plan. Revisions six, three, 2019 as the limit of grading, no grading beyond this point. So basically, no grading or removal or placement of fill, which includes the stumps, tree limbs. Another debris was to have occurred in that area. And obviously, I took some pictures, emailed them to you because I didn't have. An assistant to post them on the website. So you should have gotten those. You can see clear pictures of the stumps. They're in the process of removing them, which is good, and I think engineer Chris Bell is on the call and. He can give us an update of what's going on over there and answer any questions you guys have.
Hey, can everybody hear me?
Yep.
My name is Chris Bell. I'm a professional engineer from Higginham, representing the applicant. Um, I've been after the applicant for the last month to get rid of these stumps, and we finally got started on. On Friday, last Friday. As of today, we visited the site at 10 o'clock, Mr. Wagner, Mr. Halcy. And Hank Bruner, the. Herbologist, and. At the time we got out there, they had. Two more loads to get rid of. One load left around 11:30. And there was one more load to actually less than a load to be loaded on after I left about. 12 o'clock. Um, the operator of the. Of the excavator loading. The the stumps and and debris. I asked him to give me a call if he had any problem finishing that today. He hadn't called me. I'm assuming they had no problem removing the last load. It takes about an hour round trip to come back. To bring the truck back, so I'm assuming they didn't have any problem with that. What was left? If I could show, have the chairman. Chairman permission to share a plan?
Right ahead.
Okay.
That work?
Oh. No, I'm not the host for this meeting. Okay, there we go.
You got it?
Yep.
Okay, good. Uh, this is the original. Site plan that was approved, site plan S1. What I have shown in revision blocks are the changes. Plan for the restoration plan as of this date. This was submitted. Last week, I believe. Where we are right now, this was the area where the stumps debris was as of last week. They were actually located along here last month. These were at least pulled back away from. The wetland flags and the burnout pool last week, so it would be away from the buffer area. These stumps were all removed last week. This was the remainder spot right here. That the rest of the stumps are, like I said, less than a load right here as of noon today. What's left right in this area. Between station. 5 flush 35 and 565 right here is remainder of the soil. That's left from the stumps because they were sitting there for a little while and they got dried out when the. The stumps are lifted up, all the topsoil just falls off of them. There is about a. Three or four, maybe up to five foot layer of of a pile of topsoil right here that will be taken care of. If not, wasn't taken care of today, will be taken care of, should be tomorrow. And and this area is going to be the first area that's going to get restored as far as grading goes. So this, all this material. That's here right now from the stumps is going to get taken out. And since it's all topsoil, it's. Going to get put over here, getting ready to get spread for the restoration area. So as far as I know, all the stumps have been taken out, removed off the site. They were trucked off the site as of today. I I believe that. That that was done. I I can't say 100% it was, but all indications were that most likely did get finished. I will check on that nine o'clock tomorrow morning. To make sure that got done. The other thing that had to get done today, I talked with Hank Bruner, this area right here of silk fence is, the stakes are broken. And they're going to be putting in a new fence in back of this and stabilizing that. They should have done that this afternoon. I will check to see if it's on tomorrow morning to make sure that's done. Mr. Bruner said it's imperative that we get that done as soon as possible because this is. The egg laying season now for the box turtles, and we want to make sure they do not penetrate any of these areas of silk fence. All the silk fence along here has been inspected and it's been maintained throughout the project. We. Look after every rainstorm to make sure that it's intact. We'll be monitoring it. On Monday, Tuesday, when we come back. Make sure everything is okay through here. We did start the grading over in this area this afternoon with the bulldozer to start developing the slope. To bring the slope down in the first restoration area here. This entire area here is going to be restored. Half this pile is already gone since last week. It was stopped during, right after the cease and desist was was issued. By planning and zoning, and now we've established with the town engineer that was out there also for the meeting today. That we're going to be restoring from here. All the way back to the end. It's going to be totally restored. All the gravel that's along here along the soap fence will be removed up to station four. I'm sorry, up to station 380, which is right here. And this entire area will be restored all the way back to here. That way, the only section that's actually open. Is going to be right along. This border where they'll start again if the planning and zoning commission grants us the extension. Will be taking this pile out and then starting. Removal here, and we will be. Make sure we stay on top of them to restore this section as we go. Once this gets completed. We'll be restoring that section. The last thing we should probably note. When this is restored and we're going to put a silk fence along the topsoil that's there. Because this naturally flows in this direction, we'll be installing a small sediment pond here. So that it collects the drainage water before it overflows. Into. The sideline area over here. We will have a swale reconstructed here to go towards the. Sediment basin. It got filled in over time over the last year. And really isn't there anymore, so that's going to be reestablished. But that's the update on the plan right now, and it is hoped that. By the end of next week, this will be entirely graded and. By Tuesday, this should be Tuesday, Wednesday, this area should be graded for Mr. Bruner to come back and. Just note that there's sufficient amount of sand area for the the turtle laying area. He no longer wants to have moguls. He thinks that this area is a flat area would be better. Served to be for the egg laying area, so that's what we're going to give him. He'll take a look at that as soon as that's done. And we hopefully by the end of next week. We'll be ready to top soil and see. The entire restoration area. All this topsoil that's located up here will come down and get spread across here, and most of the topsoil here is going to get spread. In the restoration area. This topsoil has not been removed, so that will be used for its own restoration. And that's that's really about the update as of today.
Any questions from the commissioners?
Chairman Elliott, I. I am interested in understanding. The, what what are the actions going forward? For the wetlands commission with regard to this application extension, you know, once. The plan that's just been described sounds good. The the current application expires the end of June, I think. And when planning and zoning meets on this on the 18th. Do we need to have something from the wetlands agency? To allow us to act on that application at that time?
That's a good question, and I'm sorry that I can't answer it off the top of my head. I will have to refer to regulations. And see if we need to take any action. But what we have on the agenda tonight, Agent Wagner?
Yeah, I just. This is Agent Wagner. I looked at the, I tried to go back and look at the the motion. For the original issuance of the permit and. They said. I forget who did it, but it was a. A motion to approve it with the standard conditions, and then there were some other conditions, but the standard condition on the permit. In the regulations is five years, so. And that was before. those previous Wetlands agents didn't write permits. So there's really nothing to research. So I I'd say if you go by standard permit conditions being five years, it's still got a few more years left. That being said, if the applicant is restoring the area that's in the upland review area, it really shouldn't fall under the purview of the Wetlands Commission unless they choose to, like they have the opportunity to review any application that might have an effect on upland review area, even if it's out or on a wetland, even if it's outside of the hundred foot or the two hundred foot, depending on where it is. But yeah, so it may not even, it may be a moot point for the well and commission. If, once the restoration is completed.
I think as a matter of course, that the zoning agent would probably ask the whether they if if the cease and desist, if applicant has satisfactorily addressed the deficiencies. It's just sort of operating for standard operating procedure.
And so is that, is that a question that the commission answers or the agent answers? Because we don't have another Wetlands meeting scheduled before we have the next planning and zoning meeting, which I said was the eighteenth, but it's actually the twenty-first.
I believe that the agent can make the determination whether or not the the cease and desist could be lifted. Like acting as the enforcement officer. So if the the responsibility to either issue or conclude that that has been resolved. So I should be able to take care of that before before the next Wetlands Commission meeting. It sounds like it should be completed as long as everything goes to plan.
Okay, thanks.
I should be satisfied with that outcome as well. Okay, so bottom line with this one, action was taken and the applicants are the engineer and the construction company are actively responding. And our agent will lift the order as soon as the response is completed. Okay, I guess we can move on then to the next enforcement action, the longstanding activity at thirty-three Route eighty-seven.
Thank you, Chris.
Thanks for reading on the call, Chris. Okay. Agent Wagner, you had again provide some photographs and updates on activities at number thirty-three Route eighty-seven. Could you walk us through that?
Yeah, I forget where, I think the driveway was cut as of the last meeting. So the shed got moved. I believe it was ten feet according to the plan. So ten feet away from the from the stream. And then the contractor, Mark Williams, came in and removed some material behind the shed, removed some of the extra piles that were over there and then used some large stone to they basically laid it on the on the slope behind the shed. As you can see in the pictures, he pressed it in with the with the excavator bucket so that it wouldn't fall into the stream. I emphasized when I talked to him to maintain this, you know, not try to remove material from the stream bed since it was already established and there was no blockage, there was no, you know, it's all vegetated. So we didn't want to go down there. So it was basically the the area leading up into the, you know, maybe six feet up from the stream bed in certain spots. Yeah, so I went and took a look at it today. Mark Williams, the contractor, completed everything. I think all it uses is some grass seed in certain areas, a lot of it's rock. But it looks, looks pretty satisfactory. The angle is much better than it was when the commission visited the site and you could see the real steep angles. That's that's been resolved. So then I also visited with the owner of forty-one Route eighty-seven earlier today too. And because she voiced some concerns with the activity over there. I think she was thinking that the owner of thirty-one or thirty-three Route eighty-seven was doing work without a permit. So I explained her the the permit and and the extent of work and sure that they were done over there and they weren't doing anything further. And she seemed satisfied with that. So so I think we're we're in a good place with this one. I'm happy with the work that was done over there.
Good, glad to hear that it's finally approaching resolution. I don't remember the details of the engineering design. And I don't know if they fulfilled all those criteria in the application or, for example, using geotextile.
Did talk to Mark about. And we kind of came to the conclusion that that wouldn't work in the application because of the rocks. I was thinking that the weight of the rocks would tear the geotextile and he agreed. That if you put the, you know, you put the fabric down, so you have to remove all the rocks, put the fabric down, put the rocks back down and then press them into place. You'd probably tear the material and really accomplish anything. I mean, if it was being seeded and topsoil was being placed on it, then you'd kind of need it to stabilize the area. But being that that the steeper grades are all rock and filled, it was really kind of unnecessary.
Okay. Any other questions, comments from the commissioners? Good to have it getting done. Okay, then we can move on, I guess, to agenda item number eight, agent report. Three or four items there, you want to walk us through that briefly?
Okay, got the first one is eighty-five Lakeside Drive. I don't have any updates on that one. It's still working its way through zoning, so I'll let you know when that gets issued. I issued a permit for agent approval of the town of Andover's application to install a twelve by four foot wooden stairway at it's in the upland review area, the Hop River. It's actually behind the the ball fields. There's a walking trail over there. I guess you guys are probably much more familiar with it than I am. But I went out and visited the site with Scott Purson and he explained to me as a twelve by four, twelve feet long, four feet wide. It's going to be set in between two rocks and kind of work its way down. It's already kind of like, there's no excavating or anything. They're going to set the posts as far as they can, dig the holes without running into rocks. So I thought that was a pretty straightforward application. And then the next one, I had a report of some activity at one fifty-nine Lakeside Drive. I didn't see a Wetlands permit on file. There were two building permits that were issued for a propane tank and a generator installation. They were filled out in October of twenty twenty. So I spoke with the owner May seventeenth. And he was a little he was not aware that he needed a Wetlands permit. He had talked to the the previous building admin person, I think. I'm not sure. I didn't remember seeing the building permits because I usually review them when they come in here to see if they do need a permit. So basically what he was doing over there was they place a propane tank, they place the generator, and then they needed to dig a trench to bury the gas lines and the electric lines out to the pole, hook it up, and then the gas line to connect the generator and the propane tank. And I believe that's been completed now. And then there's another one for a pending approval of replacement of a septic system at eighty-four Route six, which is Scott Electrocraft. So they're they're putting a septic system within the hundred upland review area of unnamed tributary of the Hop River. Is Evan Harbison on the call?
I am.
Okay, yeah, he's the the applicant, so he could explain the project to you guys if you want.
The existing system for Scott Electrocraft is underneath their parking lot. Every year in the spring, their system backs up, so it's being affected by groundwater when it was originally installed. It's like forty something years old. So this year they reached out to us. It's the first year we've actually serviced them specifically. Asked us to look into the issue. That's what we kind of came up with was that the existing system is being affected by groundwater. They had previously done soil testing on the property. I believe it was oh eight in anticipation to put a addition on their building. So the testing was done. They found a hundred percent code compliant area. Plans were approved at that time in two thousand eight for the building addition based on the soil testing that was done for the hundred percent code compliant area. That code compliant area just so happens to be within the hundred foot of an active stream. But it's only a portion of the septic. The overall length of the system is about a hundred and forty feet long. There's one thirty foot leg that's going to be within that hundred foot range. It'll actually be a sixty feet from the edge of the creek. The rest of it is outside of the hundred foot range. So Joe and I met on site and kind of walked him through that exact thing. He took some pictures. My opinion, the creek is easily protectable with just silk fence during construction and then after construction. Due to the slope on the hill, we probably going to end up putting down hay matting, something like that to stabilize the slope. At least temporarily until vegetation things can grow in there before we would pull the silk fence. That's kind of the the quick, rough explanation. So I can take whatever questions you guys got.
Anything from the commissioners?
Yeah, I have a question of the applicant, if I may, through the through the chair. I'm just trying to understand the the plan towards the top of the page near the stream. What am I looking at? There's there's a silk fence identified and then there's this forty foot strip. Can you tell me what that is?
Joe wanted to know the distance from creek to silk fence, so that is that measurement. So there's forty feet of separation between the edge of the creek and the silk fence that we're going to put in.
And what would the sixty feet be?
That is the distance from the edge of the creek to the actual edge of the septic system. So where it says thirty-two feet of double wides. That is the edge of the system. So the measurement from edge of creek to edge of system is sixty feet.
Okay. Just just a sort of general question. I mean, this is obviously very close to the stream. I have to I can't picture the lot. I mean, I mean, I drive by it all the time and it I mean, it must have been placed here, you know, proposed here because this is where it fits, right? I mean, there weren't a lot of options, correct?
Yeah, so there's, it's twofold. One, because this is where it fits and two, because everywhere else they tested was unsuitable, which means there's less than eighteen inches of naturally occurring suitable soils. So like, I can't shift it, you know, further away from the creek. As you get into unsuitable soils and then I can't go in their parking lot as is the existing system because of the groundwater. It'd be in the groundwater.
Okay.
So this is elevated up on a slope, up on a, if you went by there now, there's a bunch of trees up on that slope, so.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
I did not have a question on this one, but I did have a question on the previous one when you get to that.
We'll get back to that. Let's make sure we again, this is this is simply a report. I don't think any action is required on our part. No need to keep the applicant on the call any longer necessary. So we're done with discussion on that. We can again return to the question you had regarding the other item on the on the report.
This is for Agent Wagner on the one fifty-nine Lakeside Drive. As I walked by there, I see it looks like there's pallets of maybe building stone or something like that in the vicinity where that trench was. And you said you looked through the different building permits. Did, you know, was there any evidence like he's building a patio or anything like that with that stuff? Or did you get a feel for what that was all about?
No, all I was told was that there was propane tank and a generator install. I haven't seen any permits or anything for patios or or anything like that.
I recall saying a zoning permit for the the generator through the tank. What did you say? Was it?
Yeah, it was a propane tank and a generator. There are two separate permits for, one for each.
Okay, I do remember signing off on that. I can't speak. And I have no idea how move forward without a wetland sign off. I mean, that's the standard procedure is the Wetlands agent signs off. Whether it be, you know, after a permit is issued or, you know, the administrative approval is given.
Yeah, I looked through the guy, the applicant's folder. I mean, he has a record of applying for permits for everything that he does there. So I don't think it was an intentional thing. I think it was just overlooked.
Yeah, it it came before the commission last year for a septic system.
Right.
I worked with him on that.
One more comment, and as I was looking through Scott Purson's application and he had the the entering boilerplate couple of pages before you get to the actual application thing. And it talked about Andover Lake activities. In a couple of meetings ago, we were having a discussion about should the commission act on applications within two hundred feet of the lake? And at that time I said, you know, I was happy with the way things were going. But when I was reading through Scott Purson's application that actually had this cover page on there, it specifies under Andover Lake activities that the commission regulates all activities within two hundred feet of Andover Lake, including any activity within the lake itself. So I guess based on on that, maybe that was the basis of Megan's comment that the commission should be. involved in any application within two hundred feet of the lake. And I guess I agree with it.
I disagree somewhat with that interpretation. My understanding was it was simply a matter not necessarily we should have to act on every application, but rather that a higher level scrutiny might be warranted simply because again, the density of population in the lake and the particular sensitivity. However, I think we can still rely on agent approval for Upland Review. And especially since we're getting better communication about those actions. That I don't think we need to put our foot in any further on lake, you know, lake Upland Review applications. Obviously, when we get down to the things that are on the lake margin, things like retaining walls, yeah, we should be out there taking a look at those. But I don't see that we need to do that for now, for activities like propane tank and generator. Now, that said, I would certainly like to see an application for that activity. I don't, I don't think that it's proper to let that kind of activity slide, even if it was simply inadvertent and other permits were issued for the activity. It's awkward to be approving an application after the, after the work is done, but I think it's even more awkward to let an activity slide without requiring an application.
So in the case of Mr. Carbonos coming before the commission to put in a septic tank, septic system last year, we would, we would now view that as something that Agent Wagner could approve.
I think so, since especially since septic systems are subject to, you know, health district regulations and all that. And I think that again, the commission has been on record of heartily approving septic system upgrades in the Andover Lake area because of the history of you know, under engineer and failing septic systems impacting the lake quality.
Okay, just wanted to make sure my expectations were clear.
I do want to remind the commission too that they have the ability to appeal anything, any decisions that I make. So if I do something that you don't agree with, you could definitely bring it up and then review it through the commission. But that's why I try to give, keep you updated so that hopefully you can decide if you want to take it on before, before I approve it, so.
And I think you're doing a good job on that too. So I think, I think it is working.
The other, other thing Jed was sometimes when I post the applications, I most of the ones I put on there, I think I take the two Andover Lake, the cover pages off of the form, you know, just to limit what's on the web because they're pre-printed. There's no information on them. So I just want to make sure it's, it's not the applicant that's omitting that stuff. It's, it's usually me. I can include it if you, if you'd like, but
Nope, that's fine.
Okay.
I just actually took the time to read through it today.
Yeah, I would like to see a more update on, for example, the Long Hill Road logging and stump removal application. I believe you approved that. And you know, there were, there were questions raised about that application at the last meeting and you know, I appreciate, you know, returning to when you, when you end up approving an application that we've considered if you would give us a debriefing on that as well. Especially where there were issues like property lines and so forth that were of concern to the commissioners. So if you'd be sure to include those in your agent report, I'd certainly appreciate it.
Yeah, I did with Long Hill Road when I didn't get an updated map showing the correct property line that went down to the stream. So the guy did, did cut his own trees down.
Really?
And as for removing the stumps, last time I drove by there, I didn't see anything further. It didn't sound like talking to him that he was going to do it right away. So.
Okay, well. Is it, you're intent to have him submit an application when he does the stump removal or?
The application, the one that he had was, it did include stump removal in it. He had talked about putting a shed there in the future. I told him he would need a different application for that. So but I think the, the one I approved was stumps and trees. The whole tree, I guess.
Good. Okay. Well, see now, I guess we can move on to the agenda, other business. I don't think we have any.
I, I have a question, just on the, it's my understanding that there were some applicants for slots.
That's the next item on the agenda.
Okay, I didn't, I didn't have the agenda in front of me. I'm sorry.
Joe, you've had some correspondence with a couple of people that were interested or expressed interest in the commission. I believe one was actually on the call earlier. But if you could give us an update on that.
Yeah, I actually, I was glad she was here because I meant to send her and Tim the agenda. I did it for the last one that got canceled, but then I slipped my mind this time because it came up so quick. But I was hoping to have Tim here too. Michelle was kind of wavering about it. She was wondering if her experience was, was adequate. But I told her, you know, the difference in experiences is good and I was hoping she could be here to to talk about what she could bring to the commission in front of you guys. But I guess she's not here. So maybe the next meeting. Also I'll send her, keep her in the loop.
Yeah, why don't you send out invitations for the next meeting? We'll put her earlier on the agenda.
Yeah, yeah, hopefully it'll be a light agenda.
Be able to, to talk to her because obviously, I mean, here we have a quorum of three. Mr. Halasy is not going to continue my commission. So we're down to three regular members, one alternate, and we really need to flush out the board a little bit. So invite them and I will, I, I guess now I now have their contact information because you've copied me on your correspondence. So I should contact them as well to invite them to apply for, for membership. We can take it from there. And of course, you can always hope that continued publicity will drum up further interest. That said, I don't think there's anything more we can do right now. So we'll move on to our next item, which is our next regular meeting, which will be on July thirteenth, twenty twenty one. Of course, delayed meeting because of the Independence Day holiday. Look forward to seeing at least Mr. Larson and perhaps some of our other commissioners as well. Again, I'll take this opportunity to express appreciation to Jim Halasy for serving on the commission and I'm sorry that your responsibilities is zoning agent put you in a conflicted situation, but I certainly understand that.
It was my pleasure to serve.
Good. So with that, we can, I think, move to our final item on the agenda, which would be a move, motion to adjourn.
I'll move to adjourn.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye, aye. Okay, so the meeting is adjourned at eight thirty four P M. Again, thanks to all in attendance and see you on the thirteenth. With that, we can all push the little red button that says leave the meeting. Good night. Enjoy the rest of it.
Good night.
Good night.
Night, everybody.
Live long and prosper.